Good evening. I'll now call the sixth meeting of the mayor and city council to order at 6:00 P. M. First agenda item is the pledge of allegiance led by Cub Scout Pack 1250. If you guys will please come to the front of the room and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Cub Scouts. Agenda item number three is roll call. Ms. Green, can you please call the roll?
Councilman DeWalt?
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Mills?
Here.
Councilwoman Clark?
Here.
President Cole?
Here.
Mayor Sidnor?
Here.
You have a call, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President.
Agenda item number four is approval of the minutes from February 7th, 2024 work session, February 12th, 2024 regular session. Are there any amendments to be made to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
President Cole, I so move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes. Agenda item number five is the report of the mayor and city council. Tonight, I will start with Councilwoman Johnson.
Good evening. Okay, my report for this evening, good evening, everyone. Glad to be here in person. My report for this evening is on Tuesday, March 12th. I had a meeting with Sadija Smiley with Sales, the infant law support organization. She just met with me so I can learn more about her organization to see if and how they can partner with the city. On Tuesday, March 19th, I attended the mayor's meeting with Laurel landlords, which was very informative. We had a chance to hear from the landlords. They shared their normal average rent increase and how they handled the rent increases before the pandemic. They also shared other issues that were plaguing them. So normally, you know, we hear from the residents. So it was good to hear from both sides to get a clear picture of the issue so we will know how to handle situations moving forward. So that was very informative. On Thursday, March 21st, I attended the Laurel Historical Society's Women History Month webinar, where we heard from Sinitta Hill, the president and founder of Peace on Patuxent, Seda Denoth, owner of Cecil's Bar and 2023 mayoral candidate, and Beth West, who's the vice president of the Women's Club of Laurel. So it was good to show support to the historical society and hear about what was going on in different businesses and organizations within the community. So that was also a great event. On Saturday, March 23rd, I attended the Laurel Volunteer Rescue Squad Annual Awards Banquet, and it was to honor the accomplishments of the members of that organization. And it was great to see Ms. Joanne Robison, who was honored for her 70 years of service. So that was great to be there. And then lastly, on Sunday, March 24th, I attended the Holy Festival at the Hindu Temple in Beltsville to celebrate the Festival of Colors, which marks the beginning of spring. It was a very, very beautiful temple, very beautiful service. The people there were very, very hospitable, and it reminded me that we can come together, you know, with different religions and different beliefs. But one important theme that seemed to resonate with me was the importance of service because we saw how the whole organization was run by volunteers, and it just resonated with me also in this position, how we just provide service to our community. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember DeWalt?
Good evening, everyone. This is the greatest time to be a council member at the in-person meetings, which is the best, to see our citizens out in full force. On the 14th of March, I volunteered at Brighter Bites at Laurel Elementary School. We gave fruits and vegetables to 170 families from Laurel Elementary School. And then on the 15th, I volunteered at the American Legion Post 60 for bingo, where I served the dinners, once they're finished, to all the participants at bingo there. On the 17th, I was with Laurel for the Patuxent. They do absolutely fabulous work in our community, and it was a cleanup garden out on Sandy Spring Road in Switzer Park. And if you get the chance... And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mills?
Good evening, everyone. So I too had a meeting with Helen about Laurel Cats and interested in trying to find some funding so that we can try to find a building for them. And she was also telling me, I actually forgot the date of this because it was actually done in my office on Main Street, and I kind of found it kind of interesting that I was having a meeting at my office. All right, so, but on the 8th, I had a meeting with the mayor and the president and vice president of the Laurel Boys and Girls Club for funding to fund the building. That's the historical building where the Laurel Boys and Girls Club is, and so we're trying to work towards creating funding for them, for the building. And on the 9th, I had a job fair at the Boys and Girls Club, which was a success, even though it rained, but a lot of people came through. We were able to help someone get a job. The, on the, on the, on the 12th, I had a meeting with the West Side developers, and this was a meeting about the, they were proposing a McDonald's and a Popeyes for the West Side community. I proposed the plans to the community via our social media page on Facebook, and I got a great response back from them and a lot of no's because they don't want a Popeyes nor McDonald's in the West Side community. So I told the developers, please come back with something better. And on the 13th, I attended a job fair at the Fort Meade Military Base, where I've been studying other peoples who do things a little better than me. So I be a student at trying to bring back these job fairs for the city of Laurel. The jobs that they had, it was a lot of security jobs that you needed a security pass for these jobs. And also, they were interested in bringing something to the city of Laurel because we have a lot of military residents here in the city of Laurel. So I told them, I said, I wanted to bring that to the city of Laurel, their job fair. And on the 18th, I attended the No More sign. I picked up my No More sign for my community in the West Side and also shared that information with my neighbors. And that was a pretty good meeting that was done here and very educational as well. And I also wanted to make an announcement that I did receive my compost can for outside and inside, so a little pub for composting, okay? And today, I'm just getting back from Kentucky, Louisville, Kentucky, where I was invited to go out and do some studying there pertaining to their city government, and got to tour the city and Louisville campus. That was very nice, if anyone's interested in going abroad for school. The job fair that was done today, Radio One was hosting a job fair at Martins West in Baltimore, and that was, had a lot of people that signed up so when we can do something for the city, they will come here, they signed up and want to do something here in the city as far as a job fair. So hopefully, I can bring some jobs, good-paying jobs for the constituents here in the city of Laurel, and I look forward to doing that. And that's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you, Council President Cole. I would like to first express my condolences to Michael Thomas, City Electrical Inspector on the passing of his father. On March 12th, we held our in-person environmental affairs committee meeting, where we voted on a new committee logo and also prepared for the upcoming No More April collaborative event with the Environmental Programs Department. On March 15th, I taped a council connections piece with the Laurel Communications Department that will be released soon. Thank you to this innovative and creative team. On March 18th, we had a collaborative event to kick off No More April. Thank you to my EAC committee members, to the city staff, including Michelle Blair, Laura, Liz, and Karine for all of your work on this. On March 20th, I met with Adrian Russo from the Laurel Boys and Girls Club to discuss future partnership opportunities and their local needs. On March 21st, I attended the Laurel Historical Society Women's History Month virtual program. March 22nd, I had an amazing time at Oakland's Elementary School at their college and career day, where I spoke with two third-grade classes about being a councilwoman in the city of Laurel. On Saturday, March 23rd, I attended the Extravaganza with our Parks and Rec Department at Granville Goody Park. It was well-attended, even though it rained. Thank you to the team and the department for putting this event on for the kids. Their smiles made it all worth it. Saturday, March 23rd, also attended the Firefighter's 72 Years of Service, and thank you to Ms. Robison for her 70 years of service. Yesterday, I attended the Holy Festival of Colors with councilmembers Cole, Johnson, and Mayor Sidnor. It was such an amazing experience, I would definitely go back again and encourage you to go as well. I would also like to mention that on Friday, March 22nd, I attended the award ceremony for one of our Laurel's residents, Dr. Carmel Norris, as she received the Robert Binswinger Communitarian Award during the Ronald H. Brown American Journey Award Ceremony. Dr. Norris is a clinical director of infectious diseases at Merck Research Laboratories, and prior to that, she was a medical officer of the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Diseases. Congratulations to Dr. Norris. She received awards along with the U.N. Ambassador Linda Thomas Greenfield and Salamander Resort Collection owner Sheila Johnson, who also owns part of the Wizards, Capitals, and Mystics team. I would also like to officially announce that last week I was approved and announced as the newest member of Congressman Glenn Ivey's Domestic Violence Advisory Board. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I will go next. On March 12th, we held the Laurel Pride meeting here in person in council chambers, where we decided the fundraising schedule and event schedule for this year's Laurel Pride. Look for those on our social media site. March 13th through the 16th, I traveled to Provo, Utah, to the National Collegiate Landscape Competition to interact with students and future leaders of the green industry. On March 22nd, this past Friday, I was able to meet with several residents to assist them with different types of projects on their property and what kind of permits they would need. As a reminder, if you were in the historic district, you need to go before the Historic District Commission for anything that is visible from the street. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to Economic and Community Development or myself. Also, on the 22nd, I met with one of our youth residents that had questions about local government and how she and her friends could bring some ideas to council. We are always happy to hear from our youth. And finally, as you've heard, I also attended the BAPs Holy Festival Celebration yesterday. Next, we will go to Mayor Sidnor for his report and some proclamations and accolades.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. First of all, congratulations, Councilwoman Clark, for being appointed to Congressman Ivey's team as well. Also, thank you, Scout 1250, for coming here, leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you so much for that. Really appreciate that. Mr. President, I'm going to share my report with the Laurel High School basketball team, who is present in the audience today. But before I do that, I just want to reflect on Women's History Month. You know, we take Women's History Month for granted sometimes, you know. Our country started, you know, on free labor and a bunch of rich white men who controlled the country. And the first convention we had for women's rights was 1847. A group of women got together, challenged the government to vote for voting rights. It wasn't until June 4th, 1919, the Congress gave women the right to vote, almost 100 years later. Then it's ratified August 18th, 1920, women got the right to vote. Black men got the right to vote before women got the right to vote. So I just want to, you know, highlight those women because without women, we wouldn't be here today. So women is very important to us. I think every month, every year, we have Women's History Month, but we don't really reflect on the contribution women have done for our country. So I just want to give a little history. I want to give more, but I just, it's time. I'm not going to go too much in detail. But just think about it. This country was started in 1619, got the independence in 1776, and the first convention for women to get that right to vote was 1847. And it wasn't until 1920 they actually got the right to vote. So that's a long time. So I just want to highlight that. So when we have Women's History Month, you know, let's really reflect on history because history is very important to all of us, right? In order for us to grow and advance and can do better, we have to understand history. So we just can't dismiss history and say, oh, it's that time of year, and don't take it in heart and try to make a change. So just want to highlight that. So now I'm going to come down to the audience and congratulate the Laurel basketball team. I'm going to ask Coach Heinz to come forward, help me out with these names. I always have a little story, right, you know, about Laurel basketball team. I substitute a lot at Laurel High School as well, and also referee. And Laurel, I just call a lot of fouls on these guys, but I'm kind of proud that they made it to the regional championship. So before I, we're going to do a couple of things here first. We got some awards, individual awards for each player. We also got some awards for the coaches, and Coach Heinz is going to, we're going to read this for one of them first. We're going to have Coach Heinz call the players up and the coaches up and present them with their awards. So I thought I had everything in order, so sometimes you be prepared and you're not prepared. So let me just go over this stack over here. Thank God for our patience. Hey, that's not a good idea, right? Okay. All right, the first thing I want to do is I want to read this citation of excellent. Laurel High School Boys Basketball Team, in recognition of your outstanding achievements in winning the Class 4A South Regional Championship game, your hard work, teamwork, and sportsmanship have brought great pride and honor to Laurel High School and the entire city of Laurel. Your dedication is excellent both on and off the court, exemplifies the spirits and value we cherish in our community. You have not only achieved remarkable success in competition, but have served as a senior ambassador for our city. Let this citation serve as a symbol of collective admiration and gratitude for your contribution to sporting excellence of our community. We celebrate your victory and the bright future lies ahead of you and your team. Signed by me, Mayor Sidnor. So Coach Heinz will present that to you. And I read one of them, and then Coach Heinz will call the names up. So I'll read the first one. Coach, you know who's here, though, so I'm just going to, if they're not here, then we just, you know, you give them to them at school. So I say, citation of excellent, once again, to Kristen Brown, in recognition of your outstanding achievements in winning the Class 4A South Regional Championship game, your hard work, teamwork, and sportsmanship have brought great pride and honor to Laurel High School and the entire city of Laurel. So all of them say the same thing. So Kristen Brown, is he here? He can come forward? Okay, no problem. All right, Coach, I'll just let you call the names out. You can come over here. Now I just put them over back over here, the ones who are not here.
Okay. So this is a word presented to Christian Coates.
We're going to take a group one together. Call his name anyway.
Oh, okay.
Just recognizing for the guys.
I recognize everyone. Some of the, it's on spring break, some of the guys outside of the baseball game, so. Christian, Christopher DeTurrus. Damian Durham. Terrence Esau Mensah. Amadou Kaluga. Aiden Lee. Tyler Lewis. Elijah Mahdi. Dre'Shaun McKay. Gilbert Osapo. Thomas Ridgeburg. Jermaine Taylor. Hayden Turner. And athlete Robert Wood.
Pitch it in, we'll count the coaches up. Players, players can stay there. Players stay there. Tell the players stay. Tell the players stay. You know, hey, players, you guys can stay. As good as the players are, they wouldn't be good without the coaches, right? So we can't do anything without our coaches and our doors in our lives, so we want to recognize the coaches as well. So same thing, Coach Eric Heinz, head coach here, recognize you for bringing home your regional championship here to the city of Laurel. They lost by one point to get to the, it was interstate, they lost by one point, so that was great. So next year, we're going to get it all the way, right? All right, so Coach, Coach Brian Orns. Over the side, Coach, there you go. Coach Thomas Harrison. I caught a lot of fouls on the coaching. He coached the girls for years. Congratulations. All right, Coach Xavier McFattan, not here. Coach Durham, Damian Durham, not here. Okay. All right, Coach Dante Powell, not here. Okay. And Coach got two. Oh, okay, all right. Other Coach Powell, Dante Powell. Coach Horace Heinz? And Coach Stedman Short? And Coach Antonio Lindsey? And I want to also present Coach Heinz with a Good Sportsmanship Award. Since March, it's Good Sportsmanship. We know you guys got good sportsmanship. You guys made it all the way to the regional championship, and you guys won. So how many fouls y'all had this whole year?
You didn't call them.
No, I ain't called them. I'm going to call a lot of them next year when I see y'all, though. All right, so this is one award, Coach Heinz, a Good Sportsmanship Award. I guess we can bring the council back and all take our whole picture with the coaches and the council. So I don't know how we'll do that. You can make that happen, huh? Okay, cool, so we move this out the way. Players on, players and coaches on one side, the council on the other side? Want the basketball team to take a knee? Thanks, Coach, appreciate that.
Anytime.
Yeah, thanks, Coach. Just wanted to say one more thing, while the basketball team is still here, Laurel High School got a new sporting complex out there, new track, new football field, so the community, please come out and support the Laurel High School football team, basketball team, all the Laurel High School sports, please come out there and support them. And if you can make a donation to the Laurel High School sporting team, please make a donation as well. So Laurel High School, the city of Laurel, thank you for everything you have done, winning the regional championship, and just anything we can do, don't cost a lot of money, you know, please let us know. All right, so thank you so much, appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Moving on to agenda item number six, appointments and reappointments. Again, Mayor Sidnor, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I ask for a confirmation of reappointments to the Youth Service Committee, James Abbey, Public Safety and Transportation Committee, Clyde Williams, and Alontae Cross, Arts Committee. I ask for the council confirmation, a reappointment of those following individuals to the Youth Service Commission, the Public Safety and Transportation Committee, and Arts Council.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor's read the names into the record. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we reappoint our three residents to their committees. Thank you.
In a second?
Mr. President, I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Agenda item number seven is appointment of Natalie Williams, Director, Department of Communications. Again, Mayor Sidnor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a great honor today to bring in Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams has a background in communication, background in politics, background in working in TV, come with a wealth of experience. I think she'd be a great asset to our vacant department head, so I ask the council for a confirmation of appointing Natalie Williams as Director of Communication.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. The council received Ms. Williams' resume prior to this meeting. Do I have a motion for confirmation?
Mr. President, I motion that we appoint Natalie Williams, Director, Department of Communications.
I have a motion, and do I have a second?
I'll second the appointment, counsel.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Just one question, is Natalie Williams here tonight?
She is here, but we are in the middle of the vote. I need a yes or a no.
I just wanted to see who I was voting for. Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
President Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Williams, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, everyone. Can I just do this? Good evening, everyone. Thank you, uh, Council President, for this opportunity to say a few words. I first want to thank you, uh, Mayor Sidnor, for this appointment. Thank you to the city council members for the confirmation. I do not take this lightly. Uh, I am honored to serve in this significant role, and I look forward to working with the communications team and alongside our department heads. You know, communications is a skill, and when done effectively, it can have great benefits to those that it is around. And so as your new department head, uh, you have my commitment to, uh, harness the power of communications for the benefit of the city of Laurel and for its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Congratulations, Mayor Sidnor.
Thank you, Counsel, for confirming my appointment. Really appreciate that. Like I said, Ms. Williams would be a great access to our team. And, uh, once again, thank you so much, and looking forward to working with you, Ms. Williams.
Agenda Item Number Eight is General Public Hearing. I will open the General Public Hearing at 6:31 PM. We have a list of speakers signed up in the back. I believe there's a second list for those that did not sign up on the first go-round. As a reminder, please come to the podium when you're called and state your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes to speak for public hearing. I will start the timer as soon as you state your address. Our first speaker of the evening is Georgina Ifill.
Good evening. My name is Georgina Ifill, and I have resided at 8231 North Lake Court in Laurel for over 20 years. I am speaking this evening. Uh, my first want, I came to the town hall meeting where I raised some concerns, and since then, I have communicated with several of you up there with regards to some of my concerns. I would like to say that I have had a good response from Councilman Mills, uh, President Cole. I think we even had an appointment to actually meet at Red Muffins to discuss the Pulte Corridor, which I have some concerns about. And I've also spoken with my councilwoman, Kyla Clark. And again, y'all, y'all have all been very responsive. Where I have not seen a very responsive, responsive, uh, has been from the mayor's office, particularly Giselle and Mayor, Mayor Sidnor. And that has disturbed me because, um, on more than one occasion, particularly, I think, when you addressed in Voices of Laurel, the, um, being transparent, you indicated that your door is open to everyone. And you asked us as a community to give you an opportunity, which I have done. I initially sent my concerns with regards to the Pulte Corridor to you after knowing that you were in favor of it. I felt that you misrepresented or conflated, um, the Pulte Corridor by saying that it was in furtherance of Wes Governor, Wes Moore's, excuse me, housing shorting issue, which I did not feel. And I think I wrote back to you in an email. I addressed all three of his bills and where I thought they differed from what you were saying. But what was most concerning to me was, we were going back and forth in these emails. I put down everything that, you know, I wanted to speak about, uh, because I was told you wanted to know everything in advance so you could have the right people in the room. I received an email from you, um, and in that email, you basically told me everything that was already out there in public with PG County, what they were doing with rent stabilization. And, um, you asked me to continue to send emails to you.
Thank you, Ms. Ifill. You've reached the end of your two-minute limit. We have heard your concerns, and we will get back to you. Thank you.
That's the problem. He's not getting back. That's the problem that I'm addressing. And wait a minute, um, you did indicate in that email to actually send you an email. I sent you an email, and I, I was requesting a meeting with you. My last line in that email was, "Are you denying me the opportunity to meet with you?" You never responded. That was on March 7th. I since called your office. And again, you know, we can do a virtual meeting if it's a matter that you need to have it recorded so that you can go back and speak with the council, that you have minutes. But to absolutely ignore my request, I felt was, again, not in good faith.
Normally, I don't, um, speak to these issues in public. But ma'am, I did respond to your email. Um, my city minister, my city assistant said that all correspondent, you know, my office sent in an email. Now, answer your questions through the email. I think what it is, the disconnect is that the answers probably wasn't the answers that you liked. But I did answer your, um, questions through the email. Any correspondent you need to talk to me can send it through email. And that's, I think that's the best way we had most productive conversation with us. I think you locked in on your position of something, and, um, my position is for the best interest of the city. So I made those, uh, statements in the email towards you.
My request was to meet with you.
That's it. Yes, ma'am. And I said to you that anytime you can meet, we can talk through emails. Correspondence through emails. So anything you have to answer, ask me, you can ask me through emails, and we'll answer you. We'll answer your question like I have done before. So I send the answers that you wanted. So that's the answer we have, ma'am.
Well, that does not seem to support. Your, your door is always open.
Well, it is open sometimes, but I think the best time is a correspondent through email, which, which was my office. Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate both of you. Uh, we will let you resolve this outside of the council meeting. Our next public speaker, I believe, I'm trying to read this handwriting, is Lori Russo.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Lori Russo. I am, uh, I reside at 1,001 Fifth Street. Been there for almost 30 years, uh, resident, definitely a resident of Laurel for 30 years. I come today because of the, um, notice that was sent out about the, um, infrastructure grant that was awarded to the city. And I just want to ask a question. I don't have any, um, I just want to ask a question. When the city, um, applied for the grant, you had to give a plan of what you were going to use the money for. What was in the plan? Just want to know, like, what infrastructure was in that plan that was going to be, um, that was, that the funds were going to be utilized for? That's my question to the City Council. Sure. Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Kenny Piercing. There's no address. Not here. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Mr. Adrian Russo.
Good evening, Counsel. Thank you for having us up here. Would like to speak on that infrastructure grant as well. And I want to make it clear to all the council that the funds that will be available for the, um, different buildings in the city of Laurel aren't for the Boys and Girls Club. I just happen to reside in one of the buildings that I feel, it's a historic building. It hadn't had any, um, type of city support as far as the structure. So I'm going to make it clear to everyone that the board and the club is not asking for any funding for the kids. We have that under control. We have our council and our arts board as well, taking care of all of the, the needs that are, um, different groups, different programs that we run. We're in good hands. We're taking care of that. We get good support, um, outside and volunteers. But please, when you think of a building that needs that work and that infrastructure, my biggest concern is we don't have handicap accessible. That's my concern. When people come to me and want to go and see the games and can't get into the building to enjoy their kids participating in what we provide for the community. So please take that in consideration and not think that the club is going to use it for any other reason than what you guys deem necessary. And I think you all are the better judgment if you bring the proper people in for the structure and things that need to be taken care of. And you all can handle that. We don't need to be involved in it. We just want our kids in a, um, building that the city, as well as the state historic system understands is necessary from the 1800s. And we take the privilege in providing our kids with the opportunity to be a part of that. I was there in the 70s, volunteered since the 80s, and will be here for my kids. I was there, my kids there, our grandkids are growing up in there now. And we would like the opportunity to be a part of the community.
Thank you, Mr. Russo.
Okay, thank you. But just to let you know, they have a button that we can hit for start over. That's all we're asking for, the opportunity to start over with the new committee and be a part of our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is the former councilman, Martin Mitchell.
Hello, hello. Um, so I just wanted to bring up the Prince George's Housing Justice Coalition. They've been continuing fighting at the county level. And, you know, one of the things we're asking for in the, the permanent rent stabilization bill, because I know that, you know, the city of Laurel, they were, um, supportive and sending letters to the council. And so we're asking for a permanent 3% rent cap. Uh, we're asking for vacancy controls, no exemptions, and fee regulations. I will say, a lot of you know that, um, you know, there's several Laurel organizations that are part of the Prince George's Housing Justice Coalition, uh, but several ones throughout the county. And, um, at, some of you guys may know, it started right here in Laurel, at 33211th Street. And so I understand that, you know, we're hearing from all different stakeholders, especially the landlords and the business interests. And, and I hope that there is also a public meeting with the renters, uh, where we talk about, you know, the renters' issues and not just rent stabilization, but if there's other renter issues. You know, so hopefully that one is made public as well, because I know last time we had a renters' meeting, we, we didn't quite give them a continental preference like the landlords, but we at least brought them to the table. I do want to congratulate Alexandria Ford from Laurel. It is, of course, still Women's History Month, and, uh, women's wrestling being the fastest-growing sport, she was, uh, successful in, uh, getting a state championship this year. And, you know, I'm definitely, always heard me be very proud about the wrestlers, uh, but also very proud about the, the basketball team. I was there when they smashed Parkdale at home. You know, one of the things we have, uh, I've seen some of the worker leaders in the back, and we were supportive. I hope that we are still supportive of the workers. You know, one of my concerns was that the, uh, the firm we're using is a union-busting firm, right? I Googled Jackson Lewis, and the top thing that came up was union-busting. It's something that they're very proud of. And so a city that is going to support its union and support its workers, you know, I hope that we are concerned with those high-powered union-busting attorneys. Let's just put that out there. You know, the last thing, being a Laurel resident, I hope that we give acknowledgement, you know, I want to say congrats to Natalie Williams, but I hope we give acknowledgement to the first black Laurel High School cheerleader and the former, uh, comms director, Audrey Barnes. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. I have no one else signed up to speak on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else that would like to sign up for public hearing at this time? Hearing none. I will close the general public hearing at 6:44 PM. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 2022, an ordinance amending the General Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the first fiscal year July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024, and to provide an effective date. Director Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the City Council, Mayor Sidnor, um, as we discussed at the March 11th meetings, this ordinance, um, updates the capital improvement program, adding $8,370,587. The projects included are Van Duzen Road, the Laurel Multi-Service Center, Carriage Hill Lane, Carriage Hill Drive, 8th Street, 1st Street, Little Montgomery Street, Park Avenue, Fleet Equipment Acquisition, uh, major facility maintenance, and the city HVAC systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Saylor. I will open the general public hearing on Ordinance Number 2022 at 6:45 PM. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mr. President.
Is there anyone in the room wishing to speak on Ordinance Number 2022? Hearing none. I will close the general. Address for the record, please.
Georgina Ifill, 8231 North Lake Court, Laurel, Maryland. I do believe this is the bond or the loan that the city will be taking out in.
No, ma'am. That's the next agenda item. Would you like to sign up to speak for that one?
That's the one I want to speak on, that one.
All right, I will sign you up for that. If no one else signed up to speak for Ordinance Number 2022, I will close the general public hearing at 6:46. Ordinance Number 2022 was heard at the March Marin City Council Work Session and the first meeting of the month on March 11th. Are there any additional comments or questions from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Hearing none. I will move that we adopt Ordinance Number 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Mills. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
President Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman DeWatt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Sidnor.
I concur.
Agenda Item Number 10, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 2023, Marin City Council of Laurel, Maryland Infrastructure Bonds, 2024 Series AA, an ordinance of the Marin City Council of Laurel, a municipal corporation of the state of Maryland, the issuer, providing for the issuance and sale of an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8,400,000 of bonds of the Marin City Council of Laurel, Maryland, to be known as the Marin City Council of Laurel Infrastructure Bonds 2024 Series A, or by such other or additional designations as required by the Community Development Administration identified herein. The bonds to be issued and sold pursuant to the authority of Sections 4-101 through 4-255 of the Housing and Community Development Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, as amended for the purpose of, one, providing all or a portion of the funds necessary for financing and/or refinancing the following projects: facilities improvements, fleet equipment acquisition, and street improvements; two, funding a portion of capital reserve fund and/or other reserves; and three, paying issuance and other costs related to the bonds, providing that the bonds shall be issued upon the full faith and credit of the issuer, providing for the disbursement of the proceeds of the sale of the bonds, and for the levy of annual taxes upon all assessable property within the corporate limits of the issuer for the payment of the principal of and interest on the bonds as they shall respectively mature, providing for the form, tenor, denomination, maturity date, and dates and other provisions of the bonds, providing for the sale of the bonds, and providing for related purposes, including, without limitation, the method of fixing the interest rates or rates to be borne by the bonds, the approval, execution, and delivery of documents, agreements, certificates, and instruments of the making of and providing for the making of representations and covenants concerning the tax status of interest on the bonds. Again, Director Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council, and Mayor Sidnor. As we discussed on March 11th, um, this ordinance is the required ordinance by the state of Maryland for this program. The program that we can participate in is, um, actually a loan. So the State Department of Housing and Community Development will issue a bond sale. We are one of six jurisdictions. We are one of six jurisdictions with an aggregate of $36 million between the six of us that they're going to bond sale with. So we share the costs. This will take us up to 8.4 million because we're going to finance those costs as well. The projects that will be covered by these funds were those that I listed from ordinance number 2022. The city has participated in this program in 2004, 2007, 2012, 2016, and we did a refinance in 2017 for a total of $20,443,834 over the course of those different participations. This, we had identified in our budget funding to pay the debt service, which we had separated from the rest of the funds once we paid off the 2012 and 2017 in FY22. So we have those funds that will be part of the 2025 budget, and this will not exceed our, our debt capacity, which is three percent of our assessable base. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director. With that, I will open the general hearing on ordinance number 2023 at 6:51 PM. Ms. Ifill, would you please come to the podium?
Do I have to state my name and address?
Name and address again for the record. Thank you.
Third time. Georgina Ifill, 8231 North Lake Court, Laurel, Maryland. I just wanted to acknowledge my council, my councilwoman Clark on the March 11 meeting in which this was originally addressed. You asked for transparency as a resident of the city of Laurel. I appreciate that. She wanted to make sure that this information, I believe you concurred that it would be posted on the city website as these distributions or these drawdowns are actually happening. So I just wanted to recognize you and thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance number 2023?
I'd like to make a comment.
Uh, one second, and I will close the public hearing at 6:52. Councilman DeWalt, you have a comment?
Yes, Michelle. Since this is a loan and tonight you heard Mr. Russo, who represents the Laurel Boys and Girls Club, talk about that what they need the money for is to have their building handicap accessible because like my house I live in, it's 1887 my house was built. And I'm figuring the Laurel Boys and Girls Club has probably been here even longer than that. And since this is a loan, is there any way that we could accommodate the Boys and Girls Club in any way as far as a loan goes or added to this loan to see that we could at least get that building handicap accessible so that people have that have children there and, and go to activities and things there? And I'm real, you know how I bring about a handicap accessible sidewalks and everything like that? And it just, we, we have a representative that's in the core of our city, which is the Laurel Boys and Girls Club. And it's a shame that we can't find out. And like I said, it's a loan. We, we're going to pay it back and everything. That we couldn't maybe find the monies to contribute to the Boys and Girls Club strictly for, we're in control of it, is to get it handicap accessible.
Thank you, Mr. DeWalt.
Mr. DeWalt would be happy to look into something like that. But for purposes of this, we've already conducted the tax due diligence call to certify that all of the property that we'll be working on is owned by the city. So at this time, be happy to look into some other vehicle. If that's what.
Thank you.
Needs to happen, but.
Thank you, Director Saylor. Any other comments or questions from the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question for, for Director Saylor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Director Saylor, you mentioned the six. Can you explain that for, for everyone? You, you said something about who the six, I wanted to know who the six is.
It is the town of La Plata, Cumberland, St. Mary's Metropolitan Commission, the city of Laurel, and sorry, the last one escapes me. But I can get it for you.
All right. And this, these six, can you explain like what, what is the six? You know, not just who the six is, but what is this six like for?
So the program that's run by the state, which is going to conduct this bond sale to get this money, there'll be tax exempt bonds, which for us will provide us with a lower interest rate. The people that work for the state program, the Community Development Administration, when they plan to do a bond sale, it's usually twice a year if they have the interest in jurisdictions. But they will send out information or they'll call the towns that, that they've worked with before to see if we have any needs to finance any, any funding. So it was the six of, of us jurisdictions that responded and said that we had a need at this time and that we want to participate in their program.
Okay. So does that mean that we, like, we all pull in together or?
Right. So they're going to sell bonds totaling $36 million. So there'll be $36 million worth of bonds in the market that will get purchased.
So this market is like the stock market or something? So the money can go up, so, and can go down? So we have a chance of, perhaps a chance of losing money?
No.
Is that possible?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, buying the loan. Got you.
Right. They're going to do a bond sale, but we're going to borrow the money that we've identified that we need in our projects.
But why are we not doing it by ourselves? I mean, why, why do you mention the six? I just wanted to know.
So the, the cost will be spread, the, the legal fees, the closing fees, all of those costs that are associated with doing a bond sale will be spread among the six jurisdictions based on our percentage of the total of the 36 million.
Okay. And that makes it less for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, working together.
The state has the staff with the expertise about the bond market. And it, it's very intensive to do our own bond sale.
Great. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions, comments on ordinance number 2023? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I motion that we approve ordinance number 2023 for the purpose of providing all or a portion of the funds necessary for financing or refinancing the projects mentioned previously.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeWalt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills.
Yes.
President Cole.
Yes.
Mayor Sidnor.
I concur.
Moving on, before we get to agenda item number 11, the mayor has asked, he forgot during his report to make a few proclamations. Mayor Sidnor, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mr. President. The first proclamation, I want to honor the Vietnam veterans, but all the men and women who served in the Vietnam War. I now therefore, Mayor Keith Sidnor, recognize, March 29th is National Vietnam War Veterans Day. So if you know a Vietnam veteran, please acknowledge that person on March 29. You ever served the military, sir? You serving the military? Yes. But you, sir, you serving the military? Yes, sir. Have you served the military? Okay. All right, no problem. All right. I was going to give you the proclamation. All right, next up, we're going to National, National Flood and Wellness Month. It's asking Mercy Manager to come forward, please. April is National Flood and Wellness Month. So Mercy Manager, right there, Chris Crum, keep us abreast on what's going on and disasters and things of that nature. So she probably has some information as well on the internet, make people aware of what's going on. So I want to, I will accept this proclamation right here. The initial proclamation would be National Public Health Week. So the, the week of April 1st, April 7th is National Public Health Week. So anybody working in a National Public Health Week field, protecting a community. Any nurses here? Anybody working in public health field? I want to see up for that. Okay, no problem. So April the 1st to the 7th, we recognizing all the public health workers. Our next proclamation here is going to be Black Maternal Health Week. This is something that we started last year when I was a city council member. So April 11th to April 17th, we're going to recognize on Black Maternal Health Week, as you know, African American women have the highest rate of losing babies in the hospital and things of that nature. So we bring more of awareness to that. I'm asking Councilwoman Johnson to come forward, but she is working with Mrs. Smalley on Stillborn. And so I think this is something that you can continue to work and hopefully that you can put some literature together for our community and the numbers on Black Maternal Health Week. Accept this one. And this is the one that's very important that even though the, the police, they protect us all the day long, but before they go out on a call, those dispatchers work in the communication department, get much information as possible and give to those officers before they go onto the scene. So we want to acknowledge our National Public Telecommunication, Telecommunication Week. So Chief Ham, you can come forward. And once again, like I say, the communication dispatcher plays a critical role in getting information to the police officers. Like I say, people call in and they get, they set the scene up for that police officer, you know he's going into. So we want to acknowledge them. So thank you, Chief Ham, as well. And this one right here, American Red Cross Month. March is American Red Cross Month. So if you haven't gave any blood this month, sign up for the American Red Cross. There's a blood shortage throughout the world. And anybody get blood, I started getting blood, actually, two years ago, first time. So I continue to get blood at least once a quarter. I should do it monthly, but. So anybody, once again, I'll, I'll accept this award right here. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item number 11 is possible adjournment to closed session to consult with council to obtain legal advice. The authority for this closed session is contained in the General Provisions Article Subsection 3-305B7. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
Mr. President, I'll motion to close the session.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mills.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeWalt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
President Cole.
Yes. The following statement is made regarding the adjournment of the Maran City Council to closed statement on this date. This meeting will be closed under General Provisions Article 3-305B7 to consult with council to obtain legal advice. While we adjourn to closed session, the council chambers will remain open. The council will return at the end of closed session to conclude our meeting. I will call the March 25th meeting of the Maran City Council back to order at 8:18. With no further business to come before the City Council of Laurel, Maryland, this meeting is adjourned.